...to the team and made the boys a team. He brought new meaning of dedication, trust, confidence, health, brotherhood, and accountability to the team. All the boys were held to the same high expectation of attending every practice on time and working to their full potential. This was never the case in the past five years I have been a mom on the team. They worked hard to condition their bodies and minds and it really showed during games. Obviously, it's always nice to win, but winning isn't everything. These boys under the direction of Coach Endry showed sportsmanship, dedication to the team, pride, and brotherhood that hasn't been witnessed in the team for the last six years. The boys were physically prepared to play the long, hard games because they had been conditioned correctly during practices of which everyone attended. This was not true in the past. What attributes do you look for in a good coach? Dependability, good communication, knowledge of the game, trustworthy, fair, consistent, and dedicated. These attributes I can see in Andrew Zendry. He also holds his players to the same standards which promotes a healthy team and why I believe you see so much emotion coming from these boys when they think their coach is not being rehired. Many of you have been on the school board affiliated with the school for many, many years, and I wonder how many times you've had students come before you to speak, let alone in tears to plead with you to keep a staff member. This alone should speak volumes to you. As you know, I requested any minutes regarding the coaching position because I was looking for some reasoning behind why you would not continue his contract. I couldn't find anything. When Joe Petrie asked if there was some reason why Andrew was not being rehired as nominated by the superintendent and principal, he was told, "No, I just think we should go another direction." I question what direction that is. Back to the previous coaching staff we had that did not hold kids accountable, had inappropriate conversations with players, allowed swearing at staff and players, and left students alone in the parking lot because he decided to end practice early just because. I've heard there are letters of complaints against Coach Zendry and I don't believe due process has been done with him. I searched for a public complaint policy on the website and through the SAU building and only found one that said superintendent would review complaints. Well, if there is a letter complaint, how come the superintendent is not aware of it as he has stated and has not done due process? I'm not privy to what is in the letter of complaint and don't know who is, but I've heard one complaint is that he puts unrealistic ideas of college ball into the players' heads. This amazes me. When do we stop teaching our kids to reach for the stars? My 15-year-old son dreams of playing for the NFL someday, and I will never tell him he can't. Because maybe he can. That dream has to come true for somebody. Coach Zendry has been coaching in Hampshire for three years. In those three years, he's coached 14 seniors. Seven of those seniors were talked to by college coaches, and four of them are playing college ball. That to me shows dedication to our players. Ironically, one of those kids that's going on to play college ball, I believe, is the kid of a student of the parent who wrote a complaint. Back in March, Coach Zendry was told to reapply for the position, and we took this as a sign that you would move forward in the best interest of the players. He reapplied and was nominated once again for the position by paid professionals. You chose to make those decisions, and again, you did not move to accept this nomination. I've attached a petition once again, brought forward by the Farmington Newt Tiger Football Team and their supporters, for you to make the decision tonight to rehire Coach Andrew Zendry for the head varsity coach position for the 2016-17 position. I urge you not to continue this conversation, but make a firm, positive decision before he is no longer available to be our coach. Did you know he was asked to be the game day assistant coach for the Shrine All-Star Game in August? It's a huge honor to have one of our own represent us at the state level. We don't want to lose him to another school. Do you also know that he has continued to support the students by attending their weight training sessions at the YMCA, all Booster Club meetings and events, and even other sporting events that his players are involved in during this season? If that doesn't show that he cares about this team, I'm not sure what does. Thank you for the dedication and the students and families of Farmington schools. Please make the affirmative motion tonight to rehire Coach Zendry as the football coach. I have a copy with the petition signed by families and students. I also, because I couldn't find a policy and neither could any of the staff members at the SAU, I just took it upon myself to get you a copy of personnel leadership and kind of how to handle it, and it'll help you to create a personnel policy. It's written by some educational attorneys. You can do with it what you want, just thought it would be a helpful starting point. And lastly, I just wanted to point out that all parents and students of the football team signed a handbook at the beginning of the season saying that they agreed to the team and what the practices were and what the complaint hierarchy policy would be, and that would be to go to the coach. If the coach couldn't resolve it, go to the principal. If the principal couldn't resolve it, goes to superintendent. Then the school board should be last because it's my understanding you guys should be like the last hand before an attorney was called if there was a serious complaint. That never happened. Coach Zendry, all the coaches, not even just him, were always available before practices and after practices to talk to. They weren't made aware. Mr. Juzokas has repeatedly said he's not aware and has forwarded his name, and so has the superintendent. That's all. I need copies, I don't know. Just so that I can each have it.
Other members of the public? Going to approval minutes. April 18th, 2016, public session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Petrie. Seconded by Mrs. Moore. Any errors or omissions?
I had a few. Page three, where it was talking about the van, the word "going."
Yep. Right under surplus property declaration, first sentence it should say "going," it's just a small typo.
I think it was supposed to be "aging."
Oh, it's "aging." Oh, okay. "Going" made sense, too.
I thought it was "going." Then on page four, it said Mr. Shagman asking if files were being in the barn, not the FLA.
The same things. Yeah. Right at the very top of the page, Kelly, where it says, no, about the FLA building, whether or not files have been stored there. I was actually asking, I sit upstairs in the barn, the brown barn behind Henry Wilson, which is actually a different building.
And still on page four, is "high set" spelled right? I wasn't sure on that one if it was IGH.
Sorry. No, the microphone only amplifies for the people on TV. Sorry. I'll try and speak louder, but I thought that was spelled wrong, and then...
Point out where it is.
I gotta find it.
The "high set" is spelled correctly. "Ferpa" is spelled incorrectly.
Right, "ferpa" was my next one. Hold on, I gotta find it. Under where Mrs. Cardinal asked about the committee, it's not July 17th, it's July of 2017. Did you have that, too? Then I had some on page eight. The other place that it's supposed to be, not at the town hall, but at the municipal offices, the posting from... And that's what I had. That's all you have? That's all I had, yes.
Chief Town Hall, Municipal Office.
Yes.
Another?
Yeah, going back to page four, I think there was an important piece of information left out, and in that same paragraph that Mrs. Moore just corrected that said July 17, there was new information disclosed at that time, too, and the reason why the district could not get out of the lease early is because the clause, the escape clause states that it's only in the case of non-appropriation of funds, and we've appropriated funds for the lease.
Okay, yeah. Yes, yeah, I changed it.
Anything else?
Sorry, one more. Page seven, third paragraph down. Mrs. Moore mentioned the copier line, and she also mentioned workers' compensation.
Yeah, I brought them all back today because we were gonna talk to Lori about, are we gonna go over those today? Probably not. Get on on the agenda.
We're gonna talk about the agenda construction. Anything else? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor as amended? Aye. Opposed? April 18th, 2016, non-public session one. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Moore. Seconded by Mr. Frida. Any errors or omissions?
I didn't have any.
Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? April 18th, 2016, non-public session two. Motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Petrie, seconded by Mrs. Cardinal. Sorry, I thought it was our hand. I have one thing on page four. Just second paragraph, my last name is a typo on my last name. Anything else for that, folks? No? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Non-public session three.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Moore. You have a second? Seconded by Mr. Frida. Any errors or omissions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Unless I brought them.
Did you bring sealed minutes?
Yes, right in that orange folder to the left of the red one.
Is that these?
Have a motion on these? So moved by Mrs. Moore.
Well, you really need to, I believe...
Do you need a discussion?
Well...
Are there any changes?
You can't do it in open meeting. If everybody believes that there are eight, then I guess that's okay.
So we could entertain the motion, but then table it if we need to discuss.
Well, if you, the next motion, are there any errors or omissions? That's what I would say.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Second by Mrs. Cardinal. Is there anything that needs to be discussed, anything?
You can't.
Well, indicate if there is, and I don't see anything.
Everybody's good. I'm good.
We're good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, that's right.
And then I didn't have access to the folder for this meeting, but we have a session five, non-public five. It's in the Farmington School Board folder. It's dated April 25th.
Is it more than one page?
No.
Because I have issues loading more than one page.
No, it's just one page.
I had, it doesn't...
Have you seen them, Joe?
April 18th.
I had some changes on them, so...
Well, can we have a motion? Is that a motion, Mrs. Cardinal?
Yeah.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Cardinal, seconded by Mrs. Moore for non-public session five, April 18th.
The only changes I had was that the motions to go in and out need to be not in these minutes, but in the public minutes. That's all I had, and I think they were.
Do you have these?
No, because she was excused.
Oh, that's right.
But the motion to go in...
On the folder, right? You have access to the folder? Did I put these in?
Yeah, the motion to go in was in there, but...
Can you make note of these, then, because you kept those minutes?
Yep. So we're gonna move the motion to come out of non-public, and the motion to adjourn needs to be back into the public.
Into the public minutes, yeah, that we just approved, so we'll have to amend those. Because you don't have the time if we adjourn it, or...
Right.
So we'll amend to take that out. Any other?
Anything else on these?
That's all I had.
All those in favor as amended? Aye. Opposed?
Thank you for joining us, Andrew.
Principals' reports.
Oh, excuse me, sir.
Who's that?
Wait a minute.
Oh, what? Is there something else? I'm sorry.
So we need to, sorry, we need to reentertain the public minutes to take what I'm taking out and put it into Kelly's, that we just approved. Make a motion to amend the public session minutes from Monday, April 18th.
To include the amended minutes.
Right. Is there a second?
So moved. Just to add the adjournment, which was...
We came out of non-public at 8:55. Motion by Mrs. Moore, seconded by Mr. Frida, and the vote was unanimous.
Okay, so I have motion and a second. All those in favor of adding that? Aye. Principals' reports.
For real.
For real this time.
I had mentioned to several of you when I first came in, I did forget to put one piece in here for recognitions, and wanted to recognize Mrs. Berry for helping with the kissing the pig last Thursday before vacation for the students. We did do that, and the kids were very excited about it. They had a great time.
Excuse me, I didn't hear that.
Excuse me?
What was that?
Kissed the pig. Yes, we kissed the pig. Kissed little piglets, they were all dressed up in tutus, and we dressed the part with overalls and little shirts, so kids had a great time.
It looked sick.
I forgot to put that in here, so I had to mention that. Last, the Thursday and Friday before vacation, the students did a great Earth Day project out in front of the building, which they're continuing to work on. They've been digging up some of the mulch and replanting flowers, and they just have done a great job. We wanted to thank the people who helped us out. Mrs. Berry was able to get us a donation of loan from Berry Surveying and Engineering, so we were able to put that down in place of the mulch. Patty Massey, our daytime custodian, helped the kids and showed them how to do the different things. Mr. Gordon helped us out with tools and things like that. The teachers did a great job helping, so they're working on this project to beautify the front of the building. They're gonna continue to work on it through the month of May, on Fridays, replanting and putting flowers in different places and things like that. And they had a great time. We had no behaviors, no incidents. We did have one child try to throw the shovel to the other child because he thought he could catch it, but beyond that, it was good. We do have our art show coming up this Saturday at 10:00 to noon, and then Monday during the curriculum fair, and the curriculum fair will be from 5:30 to 7:00. Our spring concert is scheduled for May 16th, and that'll be here or at the high school. And our May celebration is scheduled for May 26th right now. We've scheduled our step-up day to coincide with the middle school for June 13th, and field day is scheduled for June 22nd. The field trips are the same as they were the last time. I did leave them on there because they haven't gone on them yet. And progress reports are going home this week, and we're doing our final benchmark assessments at the beginning of June using the STAR assessment and looking at that data. And the numbers for kindergarten have not changed. I did have a typo, I realized in the last one, so we do have 50 students registered and then 17 coming from our preschool, so we're still holding at 67 students right now for our incoming kindergarten class. And that is it.
I think there's one more thing. Don't your fourth graders go, are going to the State House here shortly?
Fourth grade?
Fourth grade would be...
The other school.
Where am I? Oh. I missed it by one.
I see they do, but that would be her.
That's a question.
Any other questions?
You'll be prepared.
Anything?
No, nice job.
All right, thank you.
We've had a busy couple weeks since I last talked to you at Henry Wilson. Our guidance department is really busy getting some really good things going for our students with the hub books and community members. Looking, we've already started a clothing closet for the kids to be able to kind of go shopping in, to provide some things within our building for support. So we're also trying to get some, a food program in, similar to what the high school is already doing. They, we're starting science kneecap testing. Grade four will be May 10th, 11th, and 12th, and grade eight is the 17th, 18th, and 19th. There's a lot of field trips that are starting to be scheduled right now. The seventh and eighth grade, thank you to Mr. Juzokas from the high school, is they're going to a Chris Heron presentation at Meadowbrook on the May 10th. It's very exciting for them to be able to go to that. The eighth grade has secured their trip to Canterbury Lake Park on June 16th. Seventh graders are going to go to a team building day at Camp Matina and do their ropes course together. The fifth grade on May 31st is going to the Bellknot Mills that supports their social studies curriculum, and then the fourth grade on May 25th is going to the State House and the Pierce Mans, to learn about some history of our state and the government. We had our award ceremonies the week before vacation, and they were really well attended by parents. Everyone was very polite and respectful during the assemblies, which was nice to see. There, Mrs. Vashon is also looking into getting the Junior Honor Society established at Henry Wilson, which is an exciting thing, and something to celebrate our kids that are trying really hard and pushing themselves. I already talked about the clothing closet, but it's going to be paused for a cause, and we sort of have a little PBAS type of behavior system, not behavior system, but supports going in for that and being able to have kids also support their peers in the school, which is, you'll hear more about as it unfolds. And kids are doing pretty well, staying in class, and doing some good things.
Any questions?
Well, probably one that she can't answer. When did Junior Honor Society leave Henry Wilson? Does anybody know? Because I...
I'm reading for news.
Okay. I was gonna say, I remember, I remember it being there, so, okay.
I have a question. So you have a pretty extensive background in PBAS, which stands for Positive, if I remember correctly, Positive Behavioral Interventions or Systems, excuse me. Have you seen some of that evident at Henry Wilson, or is this something that you're trying to sort of reintroduce?
I actually didn't come up with the PBAS type of idea. That was from our life skills teacher that sort of took this, I put the idea out there, and I'm really excited that there are staff members that wanna kind of take this on, and so she actually came up with the idea to incorporate PBAS, which was previously done in the building, I believe, a little bit. So I can't speak for everyone, that everyone is still using it, but there are a lot of strategies that are used throughout the building that I've seen kind of walking around and being in classrooms. They're just not being called formally PBAS strategies.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, one question. How many, how many classes of the fourth grade do you have now?
There are, you wanna know how many students are?
Well, I wanna know how many...
Classrooms?
No, yeah.
There's 60, no, 60, I'm sorry. There's 75 students, and there are four classrooms.
Four classrooms, that's what I want to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jay.
Good evening. First off, I'd like to start off by recognizing some of our faculty and staff. I'd like to recognize Hannah Beland and Jenna Roy, who volunteered their time to be trained in smart board technologies, so they are now our resident experts. Both of them also provided some additional professional development during our last teacher workshop days, and they will continue to provide professional development to the faculty and staff here at Farmington High School. So it's exciting to have them on board, especially with the technology that we have in every classroom. I'd like to thank Allison Lowe and Ashley Mercier, along with Katie Gray, Alex Satterfield, and Dan Chick. They were the chaperones for the senior class trip. They headed off to New York, had a great time, saw some neat things down there, and all returned with the same number of students that they left with, which is always a positive, and even the same kids, so that's always good. But they had a great time. The kids were very well behaved and respected and did a great job while down there. Were able to see and play Phantom of the Opera, so it was a great cultural experience as well. I'd like to thank Louise Leahy, Patty Baird, and the National Honor Society students for hosting the blood drive on April 19th. We finally got the final count in. There were 31 usable pints that were collected, so we're pretty happy, as was the Red Cross for that, and so a great job to our National Honor Society. I'd like to thank the administrative assistants, Cheryl Moody, Diane Hager, and Diana Jansen. Last week was Administrative Assistance Week, so we will be thanking them for their efforts in that and taking them out to dinner later on next week. Also, I'd like to congratulate Katie Gray. We know it's School Nurses Day coming up, so she's done a great job this year, as has Lynn with filling in at Henry Wilson on that period of time. Some of our upcoming events, we have our New Hampshire Scholars Day, which will happen this Thursday. We have 20 of our 27 New Hampshire scholars who will be attending the New Hampshire Scholars Day at Fisher-Cat Stadium, so they'll get down there. They have a couple guest appearances, some former athlete from UNH who's overcome some tragedy, and also a musician. Some one lucky scholar-athlete will be allowed to throw out the first pitch, and they'll stay for the Fisher-Cat game and return later on that afternoon. As Jess pointed out, to the generosity of a couple former alums, we had the opportunity for our seventh, eighth, and ninth graders to attend the Chris Heron presentation over at the Bank of New Hampshire Pavilion, and it's a free of charge cost to our students and to the district thanks to their donation. And, you know, I appreciate, they asked to stay anonymous, and I will value that, but we've been working for the last three or four weeks to pull this all together, and we're excited to have the opportunity for our kids to see that. The seventh, and eighth, and ninth grade were chosen because our sophomores, juniors, and seniors have already heard Chris. He was here at Farmington High School a few years ago, so given the current state of the county and the things that are going on, I think it's a perfect time for this type of presentation. On May 25th, Special Ed Department hosted, will be hosting a disability info night from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Our goal is to be able to provide opportunity for parents and community members with a list of resources of what's available to them. From 6:00 to 7:00, it'll sort of be a meet and greet where each presenter will come in, sort of do an overview of what their agency can offer and the supports that they have, and then from 7:00 to 8:00, individual parents or community members can specifically talk with those agencies. Right now, we have nine confirmed local agencies. We'll also have one of our students who has been working with one of the UNH mentors, began a club called Tigers Roar. That person will be onsite as well, talking about his program and what he's been doing. He has six or seven kids who meet on a weekly basis as part of that Tigers Roar, so I think it's a good opportunity if you're available. Our art show is also coming up on May 6th and 7th, 2:30 to 7:00 on the 6th, and 9:00 through 12 on Saturday, the 7th. If you have an opportunity to swing on by, we're hoping to be set up in time to have the young guys come on down and take a look at that before everybody else does. Some of our academic highlights, we have AP testing. Let me take a step back. May seems to be the month of testing for our junior class and also our underclassmen. AP testing will take place on the 4th, the 11th, and 12th. Kneecaps will be on the 17th, 18th, and makeups on the 19th, and then our STAR assessment for our freshmen and sophomores will be happening the following week. So kneecaps, not much, much different than smarter balances, not as in-depth as it is in terms of the amount of time, so we'll be going a couple hours each day on that, so. Teacher Appreciation Week is coming up as well, so. And lastly, I just wanted to let the board know, and we'll be bringing it to you at the next meeting. We have a group of people who would like to start the Chris Carpe Scholarship Fund, and we'll begin the process on that, so we're pretty excited to be able to honor Chris and his legacy as we move down the line here, so you'll be getting more information on that at the May, 2nd May meeting.
When did you say Teacher Appreciation Day officially?
It's this week.
This week?
Yeah, through the 7th. And just so the board is up, we have the Top Ten Dinner. Hopefully, you got my email. That's coming up on June 9th, and more formal invitation will be coming out, but I wanted to let you know, because I know there's a lot coming up. Last chapel is June 17th at 9:00 a.m., and graduation is June 18th at 10:00 a.m. And lastly, I just wanted to let the board know and we'll be bringing it to you at the next meeting. We have a group of people who would like to start the Chris Carpe Scholarship Fund and we'll begin the process on that. So we're pretty excited to be able to honor Chris and his legacy as we move down the line here. So you'll be getting more information on that at the May, second May meeting.
When did you say Teacher Appreciation Day officially?
It's this week.
This week?
Yeah, through the 7th. And just so the board is up, we have the Top Ten Dinner. Hopefully you got my email. That's coming up on June 9th and more formal invitation will be coming out. But I wanted to let you know, because I know there's a lot coming up. Last chapel is June 17th at 9:00 a.m. And graduation is June 18th at 10:00 a.m. We're still working on the details for an outdoor graduation and hopefully Mother Nature will cooperate if we do.
How many seniors ended up attending the senior, ended up attending the senior trip?
I don't know the exact, I want to say about, there was like twenty-five, twenty-seven, something like that. I could be off on that.
Out of how many seniors?
There's eighty-eight total. I'll double check on that number, though. That, that sounds a little bit low, but I'm not a hundred percent sure on that.
I thought it was thirty-five, but...
Questions for Mr. Juzokas?
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Gordon.
Good evening. I just want to give you an update on some of the things we talked about that went on last week and coming up in the future. Spent last week for three days, I think it was. Tri-State Fire was in all three schools. They came in, took out, took down all the smoke detectors, cleaned them all, brought them back up and tested them. We had that done to save money on replacing the heads because I found out that to purchase, say even four heads, it was like a thousand dollars. And we've got eighty-five heads in one school. So it was more economic to have them come in and just try to clean them. They took them down, took the alcohol and air, blew them all out, replaced them, like I said, because we were having a problem at Valley View with some coming off on the panel as dirty heads. So, so that's been taken care of. We had playground chips delivered to Henry Wilson and Valley View. There were a hundred yards of chips, fifty at each school. Like to thank the maintenance department for taking the two days to spread them at the Henry Wilson and the Valley View custodians, spread them for two days on the playground up at Valley View. Town Water Department, we had them reinstall the backflow meter for the irrigation system on Wednesday. On Thursday, hillside landscaping came up and activated it. So those are ready to go. They've been started. They're only going to run every other day for now. There's a rain sensor, so hopefully they won't run when it's raining. Right now, morden pest, they have, they have scheduled to come in this Saturday morning for the first treatment of mosquito spraying at the Henry Wilson Playground, the fields around the high school and at the playground at Valley View. They'll be doing it eight o'clock in the morning. They'll post it and I'm going to try to get with Rick to see if he can post on the website because they've asked that nobody be around for at least two hours after it's sprayed. But that's contingent on the weather. They're going to let me know later this week because if it's raining and wet, they can't spray. So they'll push it off till the next weekend. And finally, the coil for the kitchen hood at FHS that we talked about, they had ordered the wrong one that came in. It's been installed. They rebuilt the circulator pump, so that's up and running now.
I just have a question. The, the heads on the smoke detectors, are you putting those in your budget next year so we have some on hand? Should we need them?
Yeah, we've, I have, I have a few that were left. But, yeah, it's, we haven't had a major problem with them. That's why, and they suggested that this would be not a long-term remedy, but a short-term remedy rather than try to replace them all.
Okay.
So they're two-hundred-and-fifty for a new head, is that what that?
It's just about that. And then there's a service call for when they do them because they have to come in and shut the alarm, the alarm panel down.
Anything else for Mr. Gordon?
You know what chemical they use to treat for mosquitoes?
To treat mosquitoes?
What chemical it's been sprayed?
I'm not sure what it is. It's, I know it's just for mosquitoes. It's a spray.
Anything else? Thank you, sir. Flexible spending accounts.
I don't, I believe that this is included in your packet. However, my worksheet for a summary of flexible spending account proposals is on the Google Drive. And I did include, with this, attached to this one sheet were the proposals that I received. The flexible spending account clause has been in the teachers' agreement for some time. Now that we've reached a memorandum of understanding on the health insurance change, which we'll discuss later on in the meeting. The SAU office actually has to implement and get the FSA implemented for our employees. What, what I've done is gone out to accept proposals from three companies that I'm aware of that do do this type of third-party administration. It's not something that the SAU should be looking at. It are employees' receipts for prescription plans and things like that. So that they go through a third-party company who, that, that is their primary business. Benefit Strategies in Manchester's been in business since 1989. School Care did recommend them to me. You'll notice that the costs for actually the plan installation and the annual review of the plan, those fees, those are no charge. School Care will pick that cost up for us. Monthly administrative fee is kind of a traditional amount, two dollars and fifty cents per month for employee participant. Health Trust has been doing these, I think, for probably about ten years or so. Again, they're not charging for plan installation or annual cost for the renewal of the plan. I'm not certain who's going to be paying those fees. It's not the district. Someone must because it does involve a lawyer. A monthly administrative fee is also two dollars and fifty cents a month. They trimmed that down to try and be competitive. And then the third company, Group Dynamic out of Thalmouth, Maine. They're, they're known nationally. They do do some districts in Thalmouth. They have done some districts over, more on the Connecticut Riverside of the state. Their plan installation cost is eight-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars a year. Annual renewal is also eight-seventy-five. And their monthly administrative fee is five dollars and fifty, fifty-five cents per employee, per account. My recommendation is that we do go with benefitist strategies. There are some things that I did not include on my summary sheet that I would like for you to, to take consideration of. And that is the federal requirements. And that's about certifying information systems security. I mean, locking down private information. And their proposal speaks to this. The part about internal controls, their proposal also speaks to it. Also, actually reconciling the amount of monies that an employee's having deducted from their pay. So I'm requesting that you accept my recommendation to go with benefit strategies so that I can proceed with a plan document that lines up with the collective bargaining agreement.
Motion of that effect. So moved by Mrs. Caden, although it was second. Mr. Frida, discussion? None? Hearing none, hearing none on call for, call for vote? All those in favor? Aye? Oppose?
Thank you.
Where we at? I'm going to bring something up under new business and that was supposed to be added to the agenda. And that is, there's been a lot of recent publicity about Donald Trump's visit to Farmington. And obviously, we know that the town of Farmington racked up quite a few expenses during that visit. I guess apparently they've been somewhat unsuccessful with getting the campaign to pay for this. And so I did receive an email from Town Administrator Arthur Capello last week indicating that if the town did not receive payment within a week, that the board had voted majority, the board of selectmen, to bill us. So with the somewhat misunderstanding that this was a school event, of which it wasn't. And so we have an invoice that's been sent to us for nine-thousand-four-hundred-forty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. And I did forward that to the board members unsuccessfully earlier today, but hopefully you all got it earlier this evening. So I wasn't sure if, if there was any... Initially, the board, we were going to have sort of like a joint meeting and Mr. King called me on Friday afternoon and said that he would like the school board to have a chance to review the invoice and have a conversation before they may come before us at some point. So, does anybody have any discussion on that comment? Yes?
I have a lot of questions.
You have a lot of questions, yeah.
Anyone here can answer.
You want to note any of them in the minutes, or?
Oh, sure. In our minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah. So here's what I jotted down for my questions. And it's all fact-based. So I'd like to know when the SAU and Trump's campaign negotiated the agreement to use Farmington High School as the location for the rally. Were there, was there any mention of Secret Service's needs at that time? I don't know if anybody here can answer that question.
I don't recall there being any discussion about the Secret Service needs other than Secret Service would have to walk the building. But that's, that was the extent. But it was just Secret Service walking the building.
Actually, it was January 19th. And I have an email correspondence because I was concerned about the police and fire and life safety detail. And I asked very specifically, how will this, this work? I have a response here from Mr. Whitehouse, jwhitehouse@donaldtrump.com, January 19th at 1:48 p.m. Laurie, the campaign does not deal with the police aspect. Once we proceed, the Secret Service will be in touch with Farmington PD and the PD will bill them.
So I guess my...
The PD will bill the campaign?
The Secret Service.
The PD, the police department would bill the Secret Service. Now, my understanding is that Secret Service is part of this. I've never known them not to be.
What I gathered, and I don't know if it's fact or not, was that they billed the campaign, but they have not billed the Secret Service. Is that a true statement? Because the other thing I saw in the email was that they billed the Trump campaign, but not that they billed the Secret Service. So my question would be, have they billed the correct people?
I'm going to recognize Mr. Gordon because he was involved with some of this.
During preparations for this, I remember Mr. Juzokas, Secret Service, and I believe it was Lieutenant Bloom, Orlando Bloom, one of them. And he brought up the question to Secret Service, who was at the meeting, as to who was going to pay for the police overtime and stuff. And the representative from the Secret Service told him at that time that the Secret Service does not pay for local police department overtime.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Wonderful. Any other comments or concerns, Mr. Petrie?
Yeah, it was, as actually was reported by Channel Nine, I believe. And that was, I believe, Laurie, I believe you know that Durham was involved in one of these. And there's not much recourse. What I would suggest is have a MOU with the police department. I mean, it's not going to help this, this time. But we, we had discussed this in the past as to what the rental charge, if you remember. We, we had talked about rental of the, and we need to get a policy together and so this doesn't happen again to have an MOU to, to make sure that they're included. I've talked to Sheriff Newboys, which he was the chief of police in Rochester. And he said they did it for, because it was good for the community to have someone of that stature come in, any, you know, any... I mean, we're, we're the first in the nation primaries for a reason. It's very easy to screw that up because they're trying to take it away from us. That's not a good thing because it brings a lot of dollars into the, into the state and we should be aware of that. How many times does that happen a year? You know, it's, it's quite an honor to, you know, I, I wouldn't care who it was. He probably heard my comments. No matter what, any, any national candidate, that's, that's quite an honor for one of them to come to your school. You know, and we did get some of our, our kids that met, met the candidate and, you know, I thought it was, I thought it was handled very well. The police, the fire, the crew here, administrators, the custodians, they all did a fantastic job. I mean, to throw this thing together in a few minutes, what I consider a few minutes is, is, I mean, it just went off. We had a lot of comments. Matter of fact, they had to have the bomb squad here. Of course, they were here the day before, but they have to stand by. And he said this is one of the cleanest schools he's ever seen. And that includes the cafeteria, which, you know, this, this puts us on the map. You know, we, we try to attract business to our town. But if they never see, if you never go by the place, if you never see what we do... There was a lot of comments from people from Nashville, Manchester, Londonderry. Those are just a few. And they were, they were very impressed with what we had here. So I would, I would just let it pass. And hey, I know it's, it's quite a bill to chew, but, you know, I think it, I think it's good. It was worth the effort.
Other comments? Mr. Frida?
Yeah, I, I think it's kind of unfair, and I'll say publicly, for the town to bill us for this altogether. The Budget Committee and the selectmen consistently take money from this school and from our children because they're screaming about saving money. Now, the school board did it to due diligence. We had a contract. We collected our money. We did what we were supposed to do. I think the town administrator should have done the same thing. Got in the contract, found out all the details, and then went ahead and either signed the contract or said we can't afford to do it. But to not go, to not do any due diligence at all and then come with a bill and say, well, nobody's going to pay it, so you have to, is totally unfair to our school and our children. We've already taken enough hits and I don't think we have ten thousand dollars to spend.
Can I re-roll my call on the January 22nd? Can I send, for the town's attorney, can I send the contract to her?
Okay. Any other concerns?
I have a lot more questions. But I think it's for the town administrator specifically.
You know, you know, I'll just say, for me personally, I, I won't vote to part with a penny for this thing, okay? You know, we were asked if we, by, you know, by the chair at the time, if we had a problem renting out the space. And my comment at the time was, I don't have a problem with it as long as it didn't take away from student activities. Unfortunately, it did, to an extent. And, you know, that's, here and there, that's all over and done with. But, no, I, I will not, I will fight tooth and nail that we do not pay this. Looking at the invoice, and, and I think what we should do is just, I don't know, maybe we should vote... we should vote on it, to make a statement, because then if they want to come and meet with us, we can ask very specific questions. I have very specific questions about the invoice. You know, you get all these people's names, and how much they made and everything, but I want to know what they did. You know, if... I'm not going to entertain voting for it, but, I mean, considering it, but, I mean, personally. But if the Board of Selectmen, you know, wanted to talk more about this, I believe in having a cordial relationship with another Board in town and having a conversation about it. But there's a lot of this, you know, just keep... There's so many unanswered things.
I...
And if I were the Trump campaign, I'd say, what?
Yeah.
I'd say, I don't know what, you know, it's very unclear, so.
That's exactly what happened.
Yeah.
They... You know, because they're not liable.
Yeah.
Because they don't have a contract.
Right.
If there was a contract, then I would say, yes.
And I think we did our part by getting our agreement in order. We took care of business here at the School Department. I'll make the motion that we not pay this invoice, and if they still decide they want to have a sit-down with us, I just don't... I don't feel it's the school's responsibility to pay this.
Motion by Mrs. Moore, and second by Mr. Petrie. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Let's move along here. The MOU for Teachers Association, that's on the agenda?
Well, actually, it's attached to the very back of the CBA.
Okay.
I don't... Nothing has changed on the CBA. It's just two sheets.
Is there anything in particular that you wanted to mention about it, or?
No, it's final.
It's final.
It's final.
Yeah, you're just giving it.
It's been signed by both parties.
Yes.
Okay.
And now we're, you know, we're in open enrollment right now, May 1st through June is open enrollment, so that's, you know... We're starting our sessions this week, information sessions, at each of the school buildings every afternoon, so that employees can come in and hear about the plan and ask questions. I mean, today we did our first one. A lot of really, really good questions about the plan. So I think people left, they got their answers, they got their responses, and that's what we're trying to do, is to keep them informed, so.
Okay.
And we're at.
Curriculum update.
I didn't get to have a conversation with Keith on what his thoughts were on putting this on. I can give you a quick update. He and I have had some discussions of bringing forward a curriculum review cycle that really has never been or recently been formally in place, not just a review of textbook, but actually the full curriculum at each subject area. So he and I are looking at that. I've talked through a couple of proposals with him. He also has... I'm looking into some research on proposed curriculum policies, because I haven't... In the most recent policy, I couldn't find a specific just about curriculum policy, and I know the Board's going through the recommended ones from the School Board. I don't think we've gotten to that letter yet, it's in the eyes. So I'm looking at that to be ready for when you get there and bringing some things forward. Last summer, we started the work with capturing what's currently being taught in the Atlas online software. And there's been some work during the school year, but the majority of that, we were looking at the next big push would be right after school got out this year and going into the summer, for teachers to have some more time to work on that. We had a group of, I think it was nine people, went in February to a two-day training in Maryland, which really gave us some good insights into things we jumped into, because we needed to kind of get into it last year. And now we're looking at it going, you know, we really need to tighten this piece up, clean this piece up, and we're having those discussions with curriculum committee meetings. I think we met the last time, probably the middle of March. So that's kind of where we are, nothing big at the moment.
Mrs. Cardinal.
Just some insight as to why this made it onto the agenda. Two meetings ago, there was a question about, what is it called? Compliance to the Student Digital Profile Standards?
Portfolio.
Portfolio. Thank you. Type on my notes. Student Digital Portfolio Standards.
Okay.
And it may be a subset of a greater curriculum discussion.
I did do a little bit of research into history on that, given the changes of technology position at the middle school in the last few years. The person who held the position four years ago, so 2012, what did work with students... In fact, she actually presented with some eighth-grade students to the School Board at that time, things they were doing that were going into portfolios. Other people who came on board since then, both administratively and teaching directly after that, are no longer available. But I was not able to go any further than that. So my thoughts are to get together what we can of what was being done then, and reinstitute, and get things up and running. Given where we are at this point this year, I don't know where that will stand for this year, but definitely want to have that up and going by next year, if not before.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Freedom.
Yeah, I just would add, it's not really a curriculum piece. It's not about the curriculum. It's really about programs and having student opportunities. And so the portfolio is a way of assessing technology skills, and it's supposed to be a K-8 program. So we should institute that here, in both Henry Wilson and the value view.
Mr. Petrie.
Yes, this is actually under new business.
Wait, wait, but is it about curriculum?
No.
Okay.
Well, it is broadly, but that's...
Can we just... Yeah, if you don't mind, just because I... So I think, you know, we had some conversations about digital portfolios, but Dr. Pfeiffer and I had a fairly recent conversation about the state of the curriculum. So, you know, because we're going to be entering the accreditation process, I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit. If I were to say to you, and I'm from another district, tell me about Farmington School District's curriculum, like in a nutshell, how do you describe that? Is a nutshell possible?
In a nutshell, work in progress.
Okay.
That's a very broad nutshell. I think probably the last curriculum that came to the Board for Board approval was probably back in the late 90s. I'm not aware of one that's come forward beyond that, beyond possibly some science and social studies stranding across grade levels. So that's what we want to bring together and get more formally involved. The work being done in Atlas is capturing units, it's capturing the standards with the units, the skills and content with those units. Last summer, the initial work was to capture the units, the standards, and the essential questions, those overriding questions, thoughts for each unit. This year, we're looking at really having a push to get not only the skills attached, but also, you know, way of working backwards from the end, making sure the assessment is there, and that the assessments are also tied to the standards, so that we know when we have captured what we're teaching is what we're assessing.
But, I mean, let's... For anyone that's watching, they may say, oh, my gosh, they haven't done any... We've done a lot of curriculum work.
There's been a lot of work with curriculum. There's been work mostly at the high school and somewhat at the middle school level over, probably going back to about 2008, with Understanding by Design and Building Units, and the high school did a lot of work with that. What I'm mentioning with the Atlas is capturing that in one place, so it can really be seen. I think that was more each teacher, put them together. The high school, I think, probably has an overall idea of where that is, but as in order to be able to show somebody, here is our curriculum. We don't have it in a document like that, if you will.
Do we have maps?
Do we have maps?
We had maps at one point.
Again, I think those are the ones kind of back in the late 90s, are the last ones I'm aware of.
Well, the curriculum...
Are you talking to the Understanding by Design?
The curriculum mapping that we did with Michelle Langa, that was...
That... So there was some work done, and I can't think of the woman's name or the program. There was some work done over the summer, a couple of years, and in the years, and where we're mapping out by grade levels, and that work has been inaccessible to any of us, as of even about two years ago. The person we worked with, it was a proprietary program that that person had, and we were no longer working with that person, and none of us has access to any of that.
Other comments or questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Petrie.
Yeah, this is something new. Today, I attended a seminar sponsored by the House Ways and Means Committee, the Federal Reserve Bank, Center for Policy, and Ross Catell of the Chancellor's Office of the Community College System. And it wasn't very pretty. What the forecast is for our populations in schools, our gross domestic product, which everybody should be aware of, and, matter of fact, I think the last growth I think we've seen was on a rate of like 0.5%. It's been pretty dismal, it's been pretty flat, probably going down. We did talk about running start with Ross Catell, and what we do, what we're trying to do, trying to keep, you know, kids in the state, because once they leave, 46% of those kids do not come back right away, because there's not many opportunities here. We... Our manufacturing side, for example, is 5% of GDP, which is, you know, if you would have told me that, I wouldn't have believed it. But they confirmed it. We need to be aware of this as a group, and see if we can't work that out, make sure kids have direction, open opportunities, you know, the things we do. Some of the things I heard tonight are excellent, you know, to... Well, there's so many things that, you know, like, good example, Albany, the cooperation between the manufacturing plant and Safran to UNH, that's why they moved here. They can't even find people to work in these places, enough people. It's not so much the regular jobs, but the technical jobs that they need, those places need. So, just so we're aware, and any questions, I would try to answer them.
Are you asking if we have any questions?
Well, if you do.
No, I don't. Policy review, policy process. Dr. Pfeiffer's not here, so...
Did he provide a pass down at all to anyone on the staff?
Yeah, there's a question by Mrs. Cardinal.
Did Dr. Pfeiffer provide a pass down to anyone on the staff for where we're at with policy? It's okay if the answer's no.
Sounds like no.
Okay. One other?
Yeah, go ahead.
Piece of new business?
Yes.
Also, did Dr. Pfeiffer provide a pass down to anyone on some confusion that was going on with the school district calendar?
That's what I just had here, too.
Did he say anything to anyone representing?
I don't know if you think he set the conversation in either of you.
I don't know all the details of the...
Calendar that was thought to be approved?
Unfortunately, Dr. Pfeiffer had had an accident, broke his hand, so he's been out.
Yes.
And we had a week of vacation, so I think there's been some gaps in some communication. I will say, overall, for the minutes, that we're growing, and I say "we," I had a conversation with Mrs. Cardinal, so I'm going to loop you in with this, growing a little increasingly concerned about the agenda we're trying to set. You know, the past two agendas, we've tried to put certain things on, and they haven't made it there. You know, for example, we wanted to do financial reviews tonight, because you were unable to be at the last meeting, and those... I did get your email about... But I thought that was in reference to the budget presentation that we asked be done as updated.
It was actually both two-pronged. It looked like there were two questions, one on our current year and one going forward. It just had a lot... Have a lot on my plate.
Yeah.
And so that's why I wrote to you respectfully, asking if I could do it at the May 16th meeting. I can throw something together, but I don't want to throw it together. I want to be able to answer your questions.
Yeah, I think I was...
You know what I mean? I don't want to...
Yeah, I think I was looking for just an opportunity, just to ask questions about financials from the last meeting. You know, presentation aside, we wanted two things, but we... So, you know, we're going to have to have that on the agenda as well.
Well, let me go back through notes and some hand-scratching that I did receive, and write something to you that gives you, at least the Board, a response.
Well, we really didn't ask... We didn't ask many questions. We didn't really ask any questions on the financials.
We didn't ask, yeah. No, I have a lot, and I'll just type them up and forward them to you, and you can answer them at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, I do want to give you a thorough report, and just lately, it's just been lots going on.
Because we have a policy on agenda preparation and dissemination, and I think as a chairperson, as secretary, we've been trying to follow that policy, providing input one week ahead of the meeting. Yeah, one week ahead of the meeting, and then the agenda's supposed to be published with that input in a timely manner. So it's getting published Friday morning, and it's not including anything that was requested as our form of input. So I think it's time to take a look at that policy, whether or not it really should be the superintendent's responsibility to put together the agenda, or if it should be the other way around. It is the chairperson's responsibility to put together the agenda, because that's Robert's Rules of Order with the superintendent in SAU's...
Yeah, we don't follow Robert's Rule. I mean, we've never adopted...
Well, we've got two former chairs here. How was it always done? I mean, I assumed that...
I worked with the superintendent to putting the agenda together. Did you as well work?
Well, yeah, that's the way you do it. It was put forth to the Board, whether the... Matter of fact, a motion was made to adopt Robert's Rules of Order, and it was... It didn't pass, so...
So, what's your interpretation of who designs the agenda?
Well, if we have a policy, it's the policy, but no other than that.
It's an internal policy. There's no New Hampshire School Board Association recommended policy on this topic.
Well, then, as a Board, do you want it to change? I mean, it's up to this Board how we decide to do the agenda. If that's what you want, you want it to be that the chairperson and the secretary put the agenda together with input from the superintendent?
We have to have input. Because he's got things that he or she, whoever happens to be in charge at the time, has things that are time-sensitive that have to be on there. But at the same time, we're now facing two meetings of things we've wanted to discuss that we can't discuss. Again, I understand due to some absences, so we're looking at a quite lengthy agenda at the next one now.
Right.
So, I mean, that's the initial meeting that I had with the superintendent, was that that was my understanding, and that's the way it was going to proceed, but it just hasn't. So I guess I'll have to sit down. Maybe the two of us need to sit down, our roles and how we want to see that.
Well, do you want it to be a motion from the Board? Do you want it to be a Board?
Well, if you've got a policy, then the policy should be followed.
Right.
Plain and simple.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the policy and bring it back for the next meeting for a first read.
Well, I'll second that.
Seconded by Stan. Further discussion?
And I can tell you exactly which amendments I think there should be in it, because I took a look at it today. And I think, in addition to who's responsible for, ultimately responsible for the agenda topics, and the timing that's built into that policy, it's too tight. You know, it states that input will be provided to the superintendent seven days prior to the meeting, yet it needs to be posted seven days prior to the meeting. So that gives zero time for the SAU team to work on whether or not they can meet that expectation of, you know, the demands on it. So I think it needs to be something more like, what do I put here, 10 calendar days prior to the meeting is when input should be provided to the chairperson on what should be on the agenda. And then... And then, following that, at least seven days prior to the meeting, the superintendent should have that input. That allows for the SAU team seven calendar days to get the items, get the presentations or the documents together that are required to have a productive and efficient conversation in our meetings, instead of always having a table or topics over and over.
All right, so you're gonna, we'll, we'll do a review based on your motion, and we'll propose those when we move that on the next agenda. We have a motion to second, any further discussion? Yes, Stan?
Yeah, I just, just wanna also reiterate that it's great that we've gone digital, but it's just like getting it in my mailbox on Saturday morning. I don't have any time to, to prepare, because the electronic documents come two days before the meeting. So I would really like a policy where people sort of back up their expectations, so that we can have the materials at a, at a reasonable time, so that I can prepare. Because I'm not, I'm working most of the time, so I don't, I have, my time is limited, and I can't expect to, to get it on Saturday or Sunday or, or Monday morning and prepare.
Would, would three days be a reasonable amount of time?
I, I think a week is reasonable. I, I personally think a week is reasonable. If it's supposed to be posted in public seven days, all of our documents, the agenda should be done, and all of our documents should be ready. That's what I think.
Well, yeah, let's brainstorm about how much time it would take, you know, the SAU team, you know, some of these are pretty extensive, like the financial reports.
All right, so we'll do that when we do the review.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of that motion? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I just wanted to bring up Governor Wentworth.
Yeah.
Governor Wentworth has sent us all an invitation to their annual meeting, and I got an email today that none of us had, and I know Angie has since responded. I can, I, as...
Oh, no, we saw it last week.
Oh. No one has responded, so...
I didn't get one.
So if anybody wants me to just loop them in, it is on May ninth, it's at six o'clock at Governor Wentworth, it's a, a dinner at the Tech Center, the, the students from the Technology Center, from the Culinary Program, put on a meal, and then we have a, a meeting, and so I will respond for whomever else wants to go, because I haven't responded yet.
We didn't attend last year, I don't believe.
We did.
No, it was protest.
Yeah.
I, I would like to attend.
Stan?
I got, I did get the email, and I can't respond, I have to check my calendar, I think I can make it, but I'm not sure.
They, they said they want a response by tomorrow.
Right, well, I don't know, so I'll check my calendar and respond.
You can, they, they give you a leeway on that.
Are you going, Mr. Petrie?
I'm not sure yet, I, I don't know what my schedule is gonna be.
All right, then I won't put you in, but I'll do, oh, I'll send, I have a draft going, so I'll put that you and I will attend.
Are you going, Mrs. Cardinal?
Yeah, I responded and got an email right back, thanking me for the response, so...
I think they probably sent it to my old address.
Oh, maybe.
Okay. Anything else from the board under new business or anything?
Old business?
Old business, Mrs. Cardinal?
I was hoping that we would have more information on where we stand for the next school year's budget, and any adjustments that have been made. But I think we have to take action in terms of the topic that I brought up last meeting, with our out-of-control legal fees and responsibilities to put on the administrators in the schools. I don't think we should wait, and I think we really should reconsider the number of assistant principals that we have budgeted in next year's school budget, fiscal year sixteen, seventeen budget.
Are you saying reconsider as in add more or take some away?
Saying reverse the decision back in November to cut one assistant principal and share two across three schools.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, and I can make it very specific, learning from what happened last season. I think I'd like to, to make the motion to adjust line number four ninety-five, which is the assistant principal line that was brought down to one dollar, to level fund it from fiscal year fifteen, sixteen to fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, and adjust all of the other benefits lines that are associated with that position.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I'll second for discussion. I guess, I, I, I don't have a grasp on your correlation between the two. I know you talked about it at the last meeting. My thought is that legal fees have been out of control due to a culture that was created here, most specifically in the last three and a half, four years. And, and I may not, I don't, you know, I don't, I can't go back, I don't know what the legal expenditures were prior to that, I'm going to say they were, I'm gonna guess and say they probably were lower, and quite frankly, that's when we didn't have an assistant principal at one of our buildings. So, explain to me that correlation.
It stems from, when I look back at cases, recent cases, of when we, as a board, have settled, and tying that with Dr. Pfeiffer's assessment that the district needs a sharper focus on evidence when it comes to decisions for non-renewal. So evidence in the form of more than just evaluations, in the form of improvement plans, giving all employees a fair assessment if they're underperforming, and a fair chance at improving their performance. That takes quite a bit of administrative time and effort and diligence throughout the year, and, and, I mean, it's, I think it was captured really well in the minutes from last meeting. Those two have a very distinct correlation, and if we're gonna expect three buildings, three schools to share two assistant principals, not only do I, I've, I've said this for months now, not only do I see a huge problem with keeping up with the very basic evaluation process, but also this higher expectation that we need, and Dr. Pfeiffer is saying that we need to address, and that is a more, I don't know how else to say it, when he said a sharper focus on evidence, I interpret that as diligent, everyday, continuous feedback whenever any employees in the buildings are underperforming. That takes time, it takes administrative attention, and it can only be a principal or assistant principal in many cases. In some cases, it can be the special ed coordinator, right? Am I using the right title? Athletic director, but that's for stipend positions, so that doesn't really fall into the play here.
Mr. Moore?
I guess my add to that would be, let's go through this year, and we have less staff this year, less evaluations to do, less students to handle, let's see how it works out. I, I wanna know that we need it before we just put it in place, because once it's in place, it will just stay there, you know? One of the things that came out often through the budget process was that we were administration-heavy, and that we were doing too much for administration and not enough for staff, so I, I can't support that.
That was, the statement that the schools are administrative-heavy was a statement by school board members only. I was at the meeting when that first was stated, and every single administrator, every single teacher that was here completely disagreed with that statement. And in fact, at least two of us said at the last meeting, maybe we don't have enough administrators, quote unquote, maybe we don't have enough administrators. And I think the other piece is, if you want to try going one year without a third assistant principal, and you want to try sharing two across three schools, well, look at how hard it was for us to hire principals or admin, or assistant principals in this district. If anything, I think it makes a lot more sense to go the other way around. Let's try one year with lower enrollment, fewer teachers, with three principals, three assistant principals, and if we find that, hey, we, we can meet those expectations. A lot of that is gonna lie with our superintendent, keeping the accountability and the pressure, and, and a good assessment of what's really going on in the buildings to really understand that, but at that time, then decide if we can go with two shared assistant principals. Would be my recommendation.
Other comments about Mr. Frida?
Yeah, I, I think the recommended amount of administration per numbers, we are administratively-heavy. If you look at population of students and how many administration people are needed, we, we, we are high. I think that what you describe, Angie, is really a twentieth-century type of top-down dictating of what's going on, and really, in this, in this century, it's a collaborative process, and, you know, it's very, very similar to the student portfolios, the evidence should be coming from the people, so that the actual job is not as top-heavy, so everybody works together, and it's easier to evaluate if everybody, so, you know, if everybody participates at the right level. So I think Joel has, has really hit the head, it's a cultural thing, and we have to try to develop a culture here where people are used to collaborating and not shutting their doors, and not, you know, being afraid of administrators, and let them, let them all sort of work together. And I think that that's what we need to do, and then if we find out that we need more administrators, but I don't think we will, I think we can, we can manage.
Oh, so do we have peer-to-peer evaluation?
I don't know, but perhaps that's what we need, because...
I think that might be a negotiated with the union kind of peer-to-peer. No?
And it doesn't even have to be peer-to-peer. I mean, I could, I could provide the evidence myself to people, like, just by developing my own portfolio of work and...
And I think through, through accreditation and self-evaluations and, and showing evidence, your administrators can look at that, that evidence and evaluate as well on that.
It doesn't help us on the legal front. I agree, it is a cultural problem, and it's a cultural problem of when we have employees in this district who are underperforming and then not renewed, I think we have a cultural problem of they're surprised. If anyone is underperforming in their particular role or job, if they're not given a fair shake to improve, if they're not informed you're underperforming, and then given a fair opportunity to improve, that's where we have a cultural problem, as an employer.
That's a function of the process, not of the...
And that's, that's what does not stand up in any sort of legal proceedings.
That is a function of the process, not of the amount of administration, the information gathering.
Right, so how would you implement a stronger process without the administrative time to do so? Because right now, our processes, only principals and assistant principals can evaluate.
But again, it's not, it's not a function of time, it's a function of process. You can have a process that is, is very simple and, and takes a great deal of time, and you can have a process that's very complicated, it doesn't take much time at all.
Actually...
Just has to be followed.
And I, I will, Mrs. Vashon, I'll ask you to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think evaluations which can be done by supervisors, supervisors are defined in the master agreement as actually a variety of positions.
Okay.
Speech service supervisor, assistant principal, principal superintendent, assistant superintendent, which we don't have, curriculum coordinator, which we do have, business administrator, Diana's role. So those are, those people can do evaluations. I really think it comes down to quality leadership and not so much quantity. I, I just, you know, it has been hard to secure quality leadership in some of our buildings, one in particular, but until we took a very active role, very aggressive, active role, we found, we did a very good job. We shouldn't have to, but we had to take a very active and aggressive role to find some quality leadership at Henry Wilson, and now we have that. We don't have it all, we need more, I think, but, I mean, just saying, I, I... Yeah, that's not an mistake. Further discussion? Here we now call for a vote, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
No. Four to one. Anything else from the board? Public participation? Sorry, she just started to get up before you, because I saw your hand. No, go ahead.
So, for time, because it's late and our students are here, I will just point out, I thought this is a very productive school board meeting, I think we have some big things here that are important curriculum. You can't expect teachers to understand what they should be performing if you're not providing them the tools to perform. Agreeably, though, somebody shouldn't be going to their year-end evaluation and not knowing that they're not doing a good job, because you haven't done a good job telling them how to do their job. I think it is a collaborative effort, and it cannot be the responsibility of one person, everybody needs to take that responsibility, you as an employee, and, and then also you as an administrator. I also agree, you don't need to throw more administration at it. I think right now, there was three things I heard, I would guess, we need more evidence, I think, stop thinking, stop guessing, you need evidence, right? So you need to do the research, so you should start researching, why, what your legal costs are, what were they, what's the trending? If you don't know that, you can't make those decisions, and, you know, you said you did a great job, and I would agree with you, but Henry Wilson's been a mess for a while, and, and at one time, there was four principals, and I think, you know, three or four different vice principals. So I, I thought that this was a great meeting, and brings me to my point, and I have a lot of other notes, but I'll wait till next time when, you know, the kids who have to study have to go, which is that we have bigger fish to fry than worrying about, you know, a football coach who a lot of people have come to support, and we waited two months. So make a decision tonight, if it's not the decision we want, then we have to move forward with that, but don't make us continue to wait, because that is impactful, and it's definitely impactful to our youth. Two months, they've been in limbo, so make a decision, and we have to go from there. So, thank you for your hard discussion, and thank you for voting on the Trump issue, that's $10,000, that could go a long way somewhere else, and it's not the school board's responsibility. Oh, and I'm Smay Cartier, sorry.
She did at the end. Laura Vittorioso, I had two questions. Mrs., Ms. Sparks mentioned that the curriculum hasn't been updated since 1990, and there hasn't been maps that are available. My question is, what happens on the half-day professional development days then? I thought that the point of those was curriculum mapping and different things.
Go ahead.
They have been for a variety of teacher professional development, teacher workshop items. This year, the, some of them have been toward the accreditation piece, and the pieces we need to do for that, which curriculum is a part of.
I was gonna say, isn't that a big part of it?
But it's systematically not where we, not the first one we were working on. So we've done that, we had some professional development on, was it April first, I believe, was our day, that was parent conference day at one building, and again, two of the buildings worked on professional development around competencies, working with students, with the smart boards that the teachers had, various things that teachers need a professional development in, as opposed to a workday on that one.
Okay, so is mapping going to be discussed?
Mapping has been, and I'm glad you brought it up, because one of the things I kind of wanted to make an addendum to, because I left it with what we had done before, nobody has access to from years ago, and that's one of the reasons behind the work we're doing with the Atlas to capture it, because while I wasn't involved in this part of the discussion happened before I came on board, one of the things that was projected was, that is ours, even if we choose not to use Atlas any longer, we can download everything we've put into there, and it's ours, so we won't have that same problem again. We've done all this work, and nobody has access to it.
My other question was, I, I guess it's more of a comment, I'm a little confused as to, I have attended this meeting and the prior two meetings, and at those meetings, the financials were... at those meetings, the financials were asked about and were never presented. And it's my understanding that pink slips went out to different teachers and administrators and people before vacation, and I don't understand how you can pass out pink slips if you don't have your financials in order. How does that...
I wouldn't necessarily say they're not in order. It's just that, you know...
But they haven't been presented or talked about, and you've asked about them.
No, no, we get them every month.
Yeah, right. The second meeting of every month.
The second meeting of every month. It's just that at the last meeting, when they were presented, Ms. Verweil wasn't here, so we couldn't ask specific questions. So we wanted... The problem is, I think it was a little misunderstood, that we want a budget presentation sort of updated to where we're at since the last one in December that the community saw. And then we wanted to talk about last month's financials. And I think that if I'm speaking for you wrongly, just tell me. I think that she thought that was all sort of lumped together, and so she asked for a little longer to make... To prepare for the presentation. So we're going to have to do the presentation and financials at the next meeting, which would be two months' worth, basically, to look at.
Okay. Thanks.
And some of the pink slips that went out were Middleton students leaving, so those were already budgeted for, so...
Right.
Yeah, so they were prepared.
I'm just confused, because I think... I don't know if some of the pink slips were, like, I know there was a reduction on the special ed line at Henry Wilson. I know of a pink slip that was given that was not a special ed person, so I was concerned. I didn't know where that came from, and it hasn't been available to look at. So I didn't know what... How that person got one. I'll be upfront and honest, if my child's teacher got a pink slip, she's not a special ed teacher, she's a fourth-grade teacher who has done a phenomenal job, in my opinion, in the classroom, and I think it might be based on seniority. I don't know, but it's not up to date. As a town member, yes, you get them monthly, but as a community member, I don't, and don't have any... Have attended meetings that it's supposed to be discussed at and hasn't been discussed at.
There's a pretty prescribed way, when you reduce force, how you do it.
And it's in the contract. It's in the teacher's contract.
It's a negotiated how you reduce your force. Anybody else from the public?
I have a question, comment type of thing. Last month, there was somebody here, Rich Bailey, who presented some information on technology. And I know in the room that I'm at, we have overhead projector. We've had it for two years, but it's not overhead. We have to drag out cords and move children and put desks and whatnot all rearrange. So if there is a grant, which it kind of sounded like what he was asking for was a grant for money, is that something we can use to put up our projectors that we have in our rooms already?
That's probably a question for Rick.
It's been a couple of years that we have had this and this problem, and it's kind... It's actually, you would think that you would take care of what we have already for technology before we get more. So just something, maybe, if we could find out. Thank you.
I think what Rick talked about at the last meeting were the TVs.
Oh.
The digital.
The digital signage. So I think she's saying, if there's money in that line, is that something that we can use? And if I'm wrong, Debbie, just... Is that something we can use to hook up the technology we already have, or does it have to be new?
Unfortunately, because of the grants, the money we're talking about for those are specific to the high school in Henry Wilson. It cannot be used at Valley View.
Okay.
They're the SIG grants.
Yeah, all right. And, yeah, okay. Any other public input?
Did you get that, Deb?
Okay, I'm going to close public input. I'm just going to make a brief statement before we go into non-public. And I just feel compelled to make a statement about coaching vacancies and coaching nominations. And, you know, the fact of the matter is, is that although very passionate, and I appreciate presentations about this, there's a lot of not-so-factual information there. You know, it's hard to speculate and make a presentation based on things we've heard. Just keep in mind that the board is privy to certain information, and that we want to make sure that the administration is given that information, and we have given them that information, so that an informed decision can be made. It's not that we don't want to make a decision. It's that the decision couldn't be made until all parties involved had that information, and that's all it came down to. No one's been voted no on or yes on at this point. And it's just that there's information that everyone, we felt, all parties needed to make a decision. I hope you understand that, because there's been some things on social media that haven't been quite accurate either. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to go into non-public.
So...
So moved by Mr. Frida, seconded by Mr. Petrie, all in favor by a roll. Mr. Frida?
Yes.
Mrs. Cardinal?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Warren?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, folks, for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for tuning in at home. Our next meeting is May 16th. Thank you.